And we're going to start with board reorganization. I'd like to entertain a motion to appoint someone to chair of the board.
I'll make a motion to keep Angie as the chair.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
You'll second that, Ronnie? And is there any discussion on that? So everyone's here present in the room, so all in favor say aye.
We have to do a.
We had said something before about making sure that we. Previous board has talked about it, just to make sure that it wasn't the, you know, whoever spoke up first.
Are there any other, are there any other nominations for appointment to chair? Okay, any other, any other, any other nominations for appointment to chair? Hearing none? All those in favor of maintaining Angie as chair, say aye. Okay, opposed? Great. Angie, take it away. It's all you now.
Thank you, everybody. Welcome to tonight's select board meeting, April 8, 2021. Okay, so now I need to entertain a motion for vice chair.
Um, I'm, I'll go ahead and make a motion. I want a motion for Mike. I think, I think Angie and Mike were, have been a great team, and I'd like to see it stay together.
That's Jamie second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any other, any other motion for vice chair? Any other nomination for vice chair? Hearing none? All in favor of Mike, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Mike. Welcome back. Okay, now we need a motion for secretary.
Clerk.
Clerk. Sorry, clerk. Can I entertain a motion?
Well, can we, Jamie, do you still want it or no?
Will you take it?
The one nobody wants. I'll second that.
Okay, any other nomination for clerk?
I think, I think clerk has this important thing for the clerk, really. I mean, you know, we're giving fun of it, but if the vice chair or chair aren't available, the clerk runs a meeting if the other two members, and you guys can act as a board.
Right.
With the, with the court. So it's not just a position that has no merit.
No, no, no.
Very true, and it does come into play often when we're, if, if we don't have a scribe, we need somebody to take the.
Exactly. So, you know, I, I, I don't want, I mean, I know we know what it is. I just don't want the general public to think that we're just appointing somebody because we have to. It is an important position.
Absolutely.
That's a good, that's a good point.
So any other nomination for clerk? Any other nomination for clerk? All in favor of Jamie taking the position? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, and there's one more. What's the other one? Is it under three?
No, I think that's it. Chair, vice chair, and.
All right. So, we need to approve the agenda, approve the minutes of March 18th. Board liaison report, bike event, green up day, four warrants, five excess weight permit, six work agreements for hired and elected officials, seven Christmas tree lights, eight law ordinance for trucks and tractors, et cetera, nine board appointment interviews, 10 building permit changes, and under that is A, updating zoning permit application, B, add Megan Albert, our administrative assistant, to permit processing, and we also need to add that we need to set up two dates for the zoning bylaws to be approved and set, 11 gravel crushing, 12 board and bridge update, 13 executive session for personnel, 14 public comment, 15 adjourn. We're gonna switch those for.
I would, you should put the executive after the public.
After public comment, correct. So we're gonna put executive session last and public comment before that. Now would be the time that we set our rules, and I think that we should set our rules that what we had for this past year where everybody speaks for three minutes. We did discuss that it's not on this agenda, but after, if it's something very important and that we're discussing and we wanna know the public's comments, we will open up to public comment. Is that correct, Mike? Isn't that what we discussed?
That's correct.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that? Does anybody wanna add anything?
I, I wanna add to, I wanna add to our policy so that we don't have to say this every meeting. As long as we're in a Zoom session, that if someone unmutes themselves when we're in public comment, or at any time, we will give one warning, and then after that, then they will be removed from the meeting or placed in the waiting room. So that, so that people have respect for each other and for the board. I also think that all comments, I think we have to do this anyway, all comments, public comments get directed directly to the chair or vice chair or whoever's running the meeting on that particular night.
Can I make a suggestion for an addition?
Sure, absolutely.
Um, I'd like to make a suggestion, and this is obvious, this is Zoom specific. I'd like to add to your rules that the chat box of a Zoom meeting is not a public record, and nor is it a place where people should be having side conversations during a meeting, and that if that, it should really only be used like, oh my gosh, you guys are, you know, some sort of terrible technical law or something like that, or my hand won't raise, can you call on me, that kind of thing. And that, that Megan should be able to turn off that chat room if it's being abused.
I agree.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. So can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'd like to say that, uh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On this other thing when you're talking about the meetings and that, that we have an agenda. I'd appreciate it, and I think the rest of the board would also, that if you wanna speak, everybody, you can get the agendas at the stores, they're posted on the website, well, they're all over the place. Kinda stick to that. It'll move the meetings along. I mean, I'm not against somebody if they got a real complaint to come in and vent, or get on Zoom and vent that problem. But I don't wanna turn it into, nobody knows what the meeting is about. We have an agenda.
Right, and if somebody wants to come to the board and discuss something, they need to contact Tim, Mike, or I to get put on the agenda for something specific. Okay?
Yeah, that's, that's always been the policy, yes.
Does anybody else have anything else to add? You all set, Ronnie?
Yeah, I'm all set.
Okay, thank you. So can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
We have to approve our policy, right?
Oh, geez, I'm sorry. Need a motion to approve our policy with those changes, please?
Don't move. Second.
Any discussion? Bob?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye.
We have to establish our paper of record.
Yes, so that is the Bennington banner?
It is. You can keep it as that, or you could.
I heard a comment today. Um, I heard a comment today, because not a lot of people get the banner.
That's true.
With that news guide or shopping marketplace or whatever it is, it goes out every Saturday, pretty much everybody gets that.
Right, cuz it's a free paper.
Cuz it's a free paper.
Yep.
Just, just throwing that out there as an option, because I do believe that more and more and more people do not buy the Bennington banner anymore. I mean, I'm, I'm one of them. I haven't bought a banner in years. So I just wanna throw that out there as an option, and if we need a motion, I'll make a motion. If we switch our paper of record to the shopping guide that comes out on Fridays and Saturdays.
Okay.
Do we know the name of that?
It's owned by the Bennington banner, I do believe.
I, I don't know the name right off the top of my head, Bob, but I think it's Marketplace. Shoppers Marketplace.
I can ask Julie really quickly, cuz she uses it to warn things sometimes. Hold on. Keep trying, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna text her really quickly.
Okay, well, we can't move forward until we do our paper of record.
Right.
I apologize, I didn't have the name of that right off the top of my head.
I think it's called the shopping guide.
The shopping guide. Yeah, I actually have it home, sitting on my table.
Yeah, so do I. Actually, there's one in my truck in the backseat if you wanna run out and jog it.
I mean, even if you have the name wrong, we know which one you're talking about.
Okay.
You make the motion, say, or whatever it's called.
Okay.
Right?
I, I, I don't mean to be, I don't mean to be flying the ointment, but do we, is there a cost difference between posting and one? That, it is cheaper. Okay, that's good, too. Um, I like that.
Cheaper's better.
Cheaper's better.
I remember that's what Julie had told me.
And higher circulation.
I think the circulation is the big thing. To me, Bob, the higher circulation is the big thing than, than the banner. I mean, I noticed that, well, the banner doesn't even print on Mondays anymore. It's a Saturday paper, no printing on Monday.
Right.
And I know the other one only comes out once a week, but hey, Price Chopper and Hannaford and.
All of them are there.
All these and all those places are in that.
Yep. All right, so we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second? All right, any further discussion? To go with the marketplace.
Shopping.
Shopping guy, marketplace, shopping guide, whatever the name of the paper is. Bob?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Okay. All right, so moving on to approval of agenda, may I please entertain a motion for the agenda, the changes?
A motion that we approve the agenda with the given changes, the resequencing of executive session and public comment.
And adding on the two dates for the zoning bylaws. Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Bob?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Approval of minutes of March 18th, 2021. I read them. I don't see anything wrong with them. Can I entertain a motion, please?
Don't move.
Any discussion? Bob?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Board liaison report. Rebecca?
So, what does it say for me? Okay, the Tour de Pownell Bike Race, thank you. Is, we dealt with it last year as well. They do it every single year. There is no more than any, there's no more than 20 riders. They follow all COVID guidelines. It's ongoing. Julie McComan, I believe, I hope I'm saying her last name right, reached out to me and asked if the Parks and Rec Committee might be willing to just do a little coordinated PR with her on the event. I told her I would ask the board. I didn't see a problem with it. It's just a matter of probably making a flyer and putting it on our town website. We're not. Um, so I said I would come and ask the board for your blessing on that, and then I would turn it over to Parks and Rec to get involved with that if, if and how they want. Does that?
Do they get their own safety first?
Yeah, they, they organize everything. They've done it every single year. There, she's not asking for anything from us, really, except for just to kind of.
Our blessing.
Yeah, to partner with them, and Parks and Rec to partner with them and get the word out, you know, put up the.
Do, do they have, do they have a website that they advertise that on?
No, it's a, I don't think so. It's a tiny little event. It's called the Tour de Pownell. They advertise it usually, I've seen on front porch forum. You'll see the advertisements for it. It's a tiny event. Literally, she says they don't even allow more than 20 riders to, to register.
No, the only reason I was saying it is cuz the one place on our website, according to our web policy, that we allow links to external is the, is the community event. And that would be the right place to put it.
Okay.
Right.
Well, and I, and also I could put it on the Facebook group as well, just if, if you guys get, you know, that's why I was asking for permission to partner with them.
I have no problem with that. I don't think we need a motion.
Just, yeah, okay, I could just do it? All right, I'll talk to Julie and we'll get that going. And then, I don't know why Green Up Day is there, because I don't have anything to do with Green Up Day.
Usually Tom does that.
Uh, yeah, so I don't know. I can reach out to him and see if he wanted to make some announcements about it or talk about it, but I, I don't, I don't.
I got a few people asked about bags, and I spoke to Julie, and she did tell me to send them to Tom Sui at the transfer station. So if anybody has any questions about the bags, I would contact Tom at the transfer station.
And they can, anyone can always write to info@townapownell.org, because we'll make sure their questions get answered.
Yep. Go ahead, Mike.
I believe, I believe that Green Up Day is on schedule this year for May 1st.
Yes.
I've seen some, some advertisement, other towns have had some, some propaganda for May 1st as Green Up Day.
Okay, maybe just some added commentary, maybe just my own thoughts on it is, is that I think Pownell's always done a really good job of that. I mean, uh, uh, Megan Randall and doing the, doing those rocks, Megan Randall doing the rocks, making it fun for the children. That is always a, it's always a really, really nice event. Just, I'm glad we're continuing to do that.
Okay, and I, for one, am gonna be out there on Green Up Day. I would like to see everybody out there that can, especially on Route 7. It's gonna be very dangerous, but.
Would you like me to reach out to Tom and see if he needs any help from me, just getting a flyer made or getting that out?
Getting it on our webpage.
Okay, not a problem.
Thank you very much.
Yep, I can do that every week.
Okay. Moving on to warrants. Accounts payable ending 4/21 for $139,040.91. I put my cheaters on. I can't see what the heck I'm looking at. $106,000 was the deposit at the town hall. $26,178.56 was a sewer bond payment. And IRS for $3,023.43. So that was for $139,000. Accounts payable ending 4/9 for $7,605.36. Green Mountain Power for $2,198.20. The Hoosier River Hydro for $1,009.61. And IRS payment for $2,0972 for $7,605.36. Payroll ending 4/21 for $8,960.89. Payroll ending for 4/921 for $9,428.62. Can I entertain a motion to accept the warrants, please?
We'll make the motion and accept the warrant.
I'll second.
Any discussion from anybody? Hearing none. Bob?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Excess weight permit.
We've had three more.
Wait, 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 one second. No one will hear you. There you go.
Thank you. We've had three more come through, the Stragglers, since the last time you approved them. There's three of them.
The three that are highlighted at the bottom.
Go ahead, Mike. You can do it.
Joel already approved them, right? Can we read them?
Stella? Robert Green and Maine Brothers Oil. Is that okay with everybody? Can I entertain a motion?
Motion is on.
Any further discussion? Bob?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Okay, work agreement for hired and elected officials.
Yep.
So you wanna start on that, Tim?
Sure, so we had something come up this week in regards to the listers, and one of them who's been working more hours than had been previously anticipated, and was putting them over the limit for VEMRs. And when we started to dig into it, we realized that we don't have work agreements for the listers or pretty much any other appointed or elected positions. And so we'd like to start implementing those and pulling together the information we need so that we have set hours and set pay rates for all of those positions.
And I, just to go a little deeper on what the, the, the lister issue is, is that there is one lister that has been doing the bulk of the work. However, what we have, if you look at what we have budgeted for the year for three listers, it ends up being about $11,000 per lister per year, which allows them at their rate of pay to work about 760 hours approximately per year, which does not qualify them for VEMRs. However, with one of the listers doing the bulk of the work, there could, if the board so wished, they could say, okay, for you and your position, because that's what you're doing, we are willing to sign you up for VEMRs for the year or for six months, or this is your choice. But what happens is the minute you put one on VEMRs in that role, you now have to make available to all, which means that for all three listers, you'd be allowing them to work well over their $11,000 a year, and you'd be giving retirement monies. So the work agreement, what the work agreement would do is the board would be setting boundaries on how much they want each role doing, what they're paid, and like, you can say, you're not allowed to work more than these 769 hours a year if that's your will, or you can change that. But it would be really good to have it all written down, so it's not like, oh, you know, rules for thee and not for me, and we don't know who's getting what and when, and just, so we've been talking to the VLCT about it, and there are ways that we can, they can, they can work with us and help us set up some of these kind of procedures in the office.
Proper language.
Proper language and all of that, yeah. So, that's that.
Okay, because I know at one time there was a problem with a lister where she had done too much and didn't get paid, and there was a problem, and I don't wanna see that happen again.
Well, you guys need to.
She got paid. She just chiseled her out of the VEMRs.
Right.
She had proof that she had worked these hours.
Right.
And that's state law.
Well, but you guys can determine, you guys can say that role is not allowed to work more than these hours. It's your choice. It's your choice.
I personally think it's a very good idea.
Absolutely.
I think we have to, just as Rebecca said, it's gotta be the level set rules for everyone. We have to be able to budget. We have to know how much the limit is.
Right.
And the fact is, we do pay, I think it's NEMRIC for assessing services anyway, but we do do some of that also. So if we keep everybody, if we keep, if we keep it under the, under the maximum, whatever we decide the maximum is, any overage can go to NEMRIC. And, and get the professional, to get the professional, or I think that's true, maybe I'm wrong.
Well, the professional assessor.
The professional assessor.
Which comes in anyway.
Uh, that's correct.
Mike, did you have something to add?
I do. Um, I, I think this work agreement, I think we need to draft this work agreement for every hired or elected or appointed official.
I agree.
Okay, whether it's planning commission, DRB, whatever, doesn't matter. I think we need to have a work agreement. And I think in our work agreement, I think, you know, just my opinion, but I think there's some things that need to be in this work agreement. One of the things that needs to be, in my opinion, that needs to be in a work agreement when you're working for the town, and once you accept the position in the town, whether it's DRB, planning commission, it doesn't really matter. I think you need to be held to a higher standard, and I think the, we need to put some sort of a social media thing somewhere where.
Most places have that in a business, as it is.
Right, and we, I think. Well, I mean, you can be on Facebook, but you can't tear somebody to pieces.
Right.
And, and I just think it needs to stop. And I think we need to stop it here at this level. And if, if you don't like somebody, so be it. Get over it. Move on. It doesn't, you know, and I think we need to do that. And I think we can do it in that work agreement.
And everybody should have to sign it.
And everybody has to sign that if you're going to be
Right.
a hired, appointed, or elected official in the town.
And that includes the select board.
That includes the select board, exactly. I have no problem with that. I, I think we all should be held to a higher standard.
I, I, I agree. Is that the same agreement? Well, the only thing I ask you is that's the same agreement, cuz we now have two purposes here, right? And I agree with you totally, and maybe I can't even vote on that, cuz I would be one of the primary benefactors. But, uh.
That's true.
But, uh, but I think we have two different goals here, so I think we need to, I think we need to prioritize first the pay and that structure, and do the, those that aren't stipend, and that, that agreement, and then separate from that, I don't know if it's in the same agreement.
It could be a policy attached to that agreement.
He had an idea, actually, if you wanted about stipends instead of hourly.
Making a list of the stipends. That's something that I'll bring back to the board when I'm prepared to do so, but it'd be very easy.
What, Rebecca, give me the, please.
Sorry, sorry.
Because I think this is very important.
To have stipends paid monthly, and then there's no discussion about the pay proportion of it. It's taken care of, and we don't have to have people putting in timesheets asking to be paid. They would be paid on a regular basis. And that would be for anyone who's stipend, whether it's, you know, once a year, the select board gets their stipend, and then those who are doing something monthly like listers or internal auditors, however that ends up working, would just get paid monthly.
Right, and you also want it where like the select board is a stipend a specific time a year.
Yes.
So.
Yes.
He doesn't know if somebody's been paid or hasn't been paid.
Well, that quarterly. Whatever the schedule is, it doesn't matter. It's just, it's, it's set.
Regular, not waiting for them to turn in a piece of paper.
Right.
So, and I think we need to flush out all the details that happen, cuz the one thing you don't wanna have happen is somebody get elected to, to any position that used to be hourly that is now stipend, and just not do anything and collect their stipend. That is a possibility. So we, we need, you know, the language to shore that up and all that stuff. So, and I think working with the VLCT and coming up with a model.
Time it so you're paid after the fact. So that, then you're for months, you question it.
Uh, yep. Uh, that makes sense, but I, I just wonder how that works with, with the elected officials.
It'll require a lot of flushing out.
Yep.
So I think, I think the best thing, in my opinion, I think the best thing is to let Tim work on this and bring it to us at our next regular meeting. The work agreements, and then we can, you know, look at that and move, move forward with it. But I think, and maybe we are on two different things, Bob. Maybe we have a work agreement for, and, and it's a little bit different from personnel policy, right? We have, we have a work agreement for paying benefits, and then we have a work agreement for your. Exactly, conduct policy here. I don't wanna call it a policy, though. I wanna have an agreement.
Policy, but we would like to, we would like to start setting a schedule of going through policies, and the first one we'd like to review is the personnel. So Tim and I were gonna set a schedule for you guys, and once, like, as you've suggested many times, and bring up, you guys are.
I was thinking that we should get four policies, four policies every two weeks, that we can all get ahead of time before each meeting. We can look at them, read them over, and then at the meeting, you can decide to keep it as is, adopt it.
A lot of policies.
It might be two. It might be, rather than four, maybe two.
Yeah.
Four could be a lot.
Some number.
Depends on the policy.
Or two.
And if you're gonna, if you're gonna actually go through the policy and read it and try to, try to vet it, and talk to people and, and research it a little bit, four is gonna be a lot to do every two weeks.
Okay.
My opinion.
But the idea of coming up with a number and periodically reviewing them.
Oh, I like the idea. I just think four is, I don't agree with four.
All right, so maybe we'll start off with two.
I think that's probably a good.
All right, and every policy needs to be, Jamie, you cracked me up. Every policy needs to have a letter or a number. Like, policy A, whatever. Policy B, whatever.
We'll create a schedule, bring that to the next meeting. Is that, is that good?
We need to move forward on this.
About that, while we're talking about policies, cuz we've opened that door. I think that every policy that comes before this board in the next year, once we approve that policy, we initial, we don't have to sign every page, but we initial every page.
Yes, and I want it where it's dated that we adopted it, that we changed it, just like you do at a school board policy.
And then we're gonna create electronic copy.
Adopted it.
Well, this leads into the next one little update. One little update is that we did create, we're working with it now, Tim and, Tim and Megan, and I'm helping as well, putting my stuff up in there, but we created a database for all electronic documents, and we've been putting them there. And it's a place that all of you will have access to them, so you'll be able to access our documents as well. And so when we, when, what's that?
Shared drive.
A shared drive. And so when we, like, for instance, that latest policy, when we amended it, I had you guys initial every single page. And then we turn that into an electronic document, and that will be uploaded into that shared drive that anyone can, there's gonna be no question. It's not, you don't depend on the, the policies, anything in books or pages. It's not, you don't depend on the policies, anything in books or paper, because those are highly manipulatable.
Well, I just, I just want to make sure that, that we bring that up, and I want to make sure that it's, that we publicly state that we are going to initial every page of the policies that we review.
Absolutely.
And I think we need to review every policy.
Absolutely, agree.
The other thing, as far as-
Wait a minute, Jamie, no one hears you when you don't have it.
The reason why I feel it should either be a monthly or a quarterly on this payroll, pay scale, is that for, if someone decides they want to resign, they're not pulling the full stipend that was budgeted, and then somebody else comes along, gets appointed, or to finish out that set thing, and expect the full stipend also.
And that's happened numerous times.
Yes.
I don't have a problem with somebody getting a full stipend if there's a sickness or hospitalization, or even a death, under different circumstances, but otherwise, I think it should be a monthly. I agree one hundred percent with that. Okay, anything else?
I've got one thing to say on that policy stuff.
Absolutely.
And that is, do we have to have a new policy? It seems like we've got a new policy every time we come here. If we ain't smart enough to make out a policy that's at least good for a year, we shouldn't be here. That's all I got to say.
No, we just need to-
Just going through policy after policy after policy, and the first thing that I would do before I wrote a policy up, I would talk to the people, well, the listers, for example. You only got two.
Three.
We have three.
All right, we'll talk to them. How many hours you want to work? The reason that got stifled before, it was always somebody that was like a lead lister. Somebody that spent a lot more time than the others. And some people were perfectly happy. We got a guy over at the transfer station, well, he refused to work twenty-four hours. He didn't want to be on that VEMR thing. That's the first thing we ought to do, is find that out, and, and tell the people why we're doing this. We're doing this because we want to establish a medium where we got the help we need, but we don't want to pay retirement insurance and everything else. It's one, and then all the rest of them say, well, you, we gotta have it. That's, we gotta explain that. And we don't need a new policy, you know,
I don't think that's really a policy.
Once a year's enough.
Yeah, the, the listers, we're not talking about making a policy for the listers.
No.
Well, you're making a policy for their time. That's a policy. What do you call that?
A work agreement is different.
There's a big time to push out and to really settle down, and it's more just so that, like you say, Ronnie, that they know what's expected of them.
That's right.
Because a lot of times, they don't know they should, they think they're hours, so.
Right, I, I think it's-
It's helpful in both directions.
Right, it protects the employee and it protects the town. It, it protects everybody involved, instead of just wondering what you're supposed to be doing, you actually know. You actually get eighteen hours a week, or whatever it is. That this is what you work, this is, and this is what you get paid. I don't know what I'm supposed to do. I don't, I just, I think there's been too much indecision for a long time. You know.
Yeah, I think, and I think, you, you know, there's valid points here, and the, what we experienced last year, or the year before last, was, was every night, it was three hours of nothing but talking to policy, and it was policy after policy, and a lot of it was convoluted.
Right.
So I, I think we need to be much more streamlined. We need to take a look at the policies that we do have, and, and, and some of these might be eliminating policies. It might be, do we really need this, or is this part of another policy? And it, you know, a, a clause in one policy might eliminate a completely different policy that, that exists. So those are the kinds of things I think we need to look at. We need to make them easy to understand, easy to distribute, easy to enforce, and, and just make sense.
Clear.
It clear.
Absolutely, and every policy needs to be revised or looked at yearly, at least.
And some of these jobs, like DRB, planning, things like that, some of these people got a life. They got some plans. They go, you know, they're older people and this and that. They may go for six weeks or whatever, on a vacation. But they ain't custom telling nothing. So what do they do? Get penalized, or they get thrown off the board? What's the story? See, that's why you gotta talk to these, as long as you got a quorum, as far as I'm concerned, I've been on the planning board before. As long as there's a quorum, that's all it is. It don't have to be, you know, a full compliment. Somebody, they might be sick, and maybe on vacation, going hunting or something. I don't care what they're doing. But they should be, that should be understood amongst the people. If you've got a plan, you know, let us know ahead of time. That's only common courtesy. That's all that is. You know, if you're gonna take a bunch of time off, say, well, look, I ain't gonna be around.
I agree. Okay.
That's all I got to say on that.
Any further discussion on work agreements? Okay, let's move along to Christmas tree lights.
Ah, that's me.
There you go.
So, um, as you know, the Pownell Historical Society put up some Christmas tree lights, and I'm finding this to be common with the things that we're doing. A lot of enthusiasm to put things in and not much to take them down, and so, I, they need to come down. The person who put them up is unwilling to take them down. So, um, I did reach out to Joyce, and I asked her if there was money left over in the budget that of the donation she received for those lights to pay someone to take them down, and she indicated that there was, but she asked me to find a volunteer. I do not know volunteers that have bucket loaders. That's not something, I think we've already tapped out our volunteers. If any of you have an idea, that's great, but personally, I think that we need to ask for money from the donations, have it, those things brought down. And then ongoing, my idea on this is that those can be taken down, separated into smaller strands, and they can be used for low-lying bushes that are, anyone, I can take them down, anyone can do it. You don't need special machinery. And if we want to light up that big tree next year, we will use some of the fundraised money, and we'll buy those projectors that just project the lights into the trees. There's no installation, there's no whatever. You just turn the switch, and it's a beautifully lit tree.
Or we plant a smaller tree that we can manage.
Or you plant a smaller tree that we can manage, or a variety of those things.
Projector lights, that's a perfect idea.
Yeah, and it's cheap. Right.
Mike, do you have something to add?
No, I'm, I'm good with that. I, I, I think the projector lights, I, I, I think a smaller tree might be fine, but I, I do like the concept of, of the big tree being lit.
I do, too. It's beautiful, but it's-
So I believe that-
Two, two, three projectors, they cost a hundred bucks each, they get plugged in, you turn them on, and it's from all different, I mean, it actually looks probably better than it did.
They do look pretty cool. I saw them at our campsite last year, and it was actually pretty cool.
Right, and it's, you know, this, this was an awesome idea that they came up with, and I don't wanna, you know.
It was great. It was beautiful.
It was, it was unbelievable. Well, you know, now there's an expense, and, you know, we need to get away from that.
Yes.
Okay.
I got another comment on the parks and recreation thing, I guess. Like the ice skating rink, that was fine, I guess. I guess they, they got pretty good participation and everything else, but what I got a question is, who's got the keys to the carriage house?
Why, it's not at the carriage house?
What is it?
It's at the town shed.
I know where it is. I had, who's got the keys to the carriage house? That's where it should be. Why should it be down the shed, town shed? Where we got trucks going in and out there with salt and sand and everything else, and we need that space, that wide open space. I was asked this by, by a couple of people who work with the town. And they said, the building's right there.
Yeah.
What's in it? And who's got a key?
Well, that would be the church people.
But it's, it belongs to the town.
Right.
I don't know. I don't know what they have.
But I mean, if you got a few planks, I think you could set them in there. That's just a suggestion. I mean, do what you want. We can truck them all over town if we want. And look for them. If they get run over by a loader down there and get broken or something.
Well, they're over at the town shed now, so we'll leave them there, and we'll discuss it with the church, and hopefully next year, we can
That's fine.
Put it in the carriage barn.
That, that'd be easier for everyone else to put them in the carriage barn.
Absolutely. Okay. Moving along to law and ordinance for truck and tractors, et cetera. Mike?
Yep, this is me. I put it on. So, we had an email a few weeks ago, sent to the board. We all saw it. I'm a resident on Church Street. And I, I've been against something like this for our town for a while, because I don't want to put a hindrance on our local contractors, dump truck drivers, and so on and so forth. And I've talked to a bunch of guys that have those types of trucks, that actually live here and actually pay taxes, and those are the guys that concern me. But the garbage that's up and down Route Seven, and up and down Route three forty-six
Yes.
is absolutely disgusting.
I agree.
And a, a bunch of people have reached out to me, and they're absolutely correct. Tonight, I went down to Stewart's at four o'clock. I came back up. There is hundreds of cans that came out of somebody's truck headed north, because they're on the, they're on the right hand, they're on the northbound lane on the shoulder. Hundreds of cans that came out of somebody's uncovered truck and litter the side of Route Seven. I, for one, and I don't, I'm speaking strictly as myself, I have sat down in the firehouse parking lot, okay? I have sat there between the hours, not the same day, but I take my lunch, and I've sat there from the hours of eleven to one thirty. And I can't tell you the number of trucks and trailers that go into the transfer, or the, it's a transfer station, I'm sorry, that go into there uncovered. And I don't care what they say, I've sat there. I've watched it, okay? I think we need to draw an ordinance up, and I think we need to get our sheriffs on it. And the, and when people are coming through this town, when they get to Williamstown, they have to be covered. When they leave Bennington, they have to be covered. They can't leave Bennington, drive through there without being covered, and they can't go into Mass without being covered, so why shouldn't they be covered in the town of Pownell when they go through here?
I agree one hundred percent.
And, and all of the guys, and I know ninety percent of the local contractors who drive their dump trucks and, and trailers, and who do rubbish removal, they need to be covered too, and they're on, they're on board with us because it disgusts them how it looks in our town. And we need to draw up an ordinance, and it needs to be very strict, and it has to have some pretty serious fines to it. It's disgusting to live here right now. I don't want to, I don't want to be stereotypical and say what it looks like, but when you head south, I can tell you what it looks like, not too far from here.
And I also spoke to Joel about putting up signs that say that if you get caught littering, there's fines. And he says the signs cost about thirty-five dollars, and I think we should put the signs back up like we used to have when we were kids, Mike. If you were caught littering, you were charged. I think out of sight, out of mind, people don't see it, so they don't think, it amazes me that you're driving down the road, and somebody in front of you just opens up the window and chucks a bag of, from McDonald's or whatever kind of bag, out the window. It's unacceptable. I think that we need to put up signs just to remind people that if you get caught littering, you're gonna be charged. I mean, I know you have to catch them, you have to have a license plate and all that, but I also agree with the policy one hundred percent. People have been complaining to me about the littering for over a year, just like they have with you, Mike, so we need to get on this as soon as possible.
It's, it's not just Route Seven, it's Route three forty-six. Go down three forty-six.
I know, I, you know.
It's on Center Street. You walk down Center Street. I cannot believe the garbage on both sides of the street. Beer bottles, cigarette packs.
It's, it's going, it's going to our own landfill, or our transfer station. It's going to Maple Grove Road. If somebody's going up through with a pickup, truckload of garbage, or stuff that's gonna blow out, they have to cover it. It's, it's, this is, this is, I don't know.
Can I ask you a question? Can you compel the businesses that receive trash to not accept trash uncovered?
Well.
If, then can you make that?
Casella, I, I have not witnessed a sign. I haven't physically seen it myself. But supposedly, at the, at Casella's, there is a sign that says, if you are not covered, you do not dump. I can tell you for free that that sign means nothing, because I've witnessed, and a lot of it are the same people, it's not all of them, because there are some, I've witnessed some people that go in there several times a day that are covered. And, and, but there are some that go in there quite often. I've been doing this for a couple of weeks. This isn't something that I did a couple of days, okay? I've had people say, what the hell are you doing sending to the firehouse eating lunch? Yeah, well, that's what I'm doing. I'm watching what's going on. Because we had someone complain to us through an email, and he's right. It's disgusting.
Now, the email we got was about Church Street, correct?
Yeah, so, and that was somebody I had talked to years ago, and I, I didn't get back to him, shame on me.
But I did follow up with, at the time, but it was very specific to Church Street. It was, we reached an agreement with, with Casella to split the cost of some paving, to cut down on the dust. We put up some signage, or that was supposed to happen. So the last update I had was that we had agreed to that. This is broader, and I think, and I think very important. This is much broader.
Right.
Because now we're talking about three forty-six, we're talking about Route Seven, and I think all of that is very important, very valuable.
Right.
Yeah, it should be, well, well, yes, any town road, but I think the signage would be more important for the transfer station, for the, for Casella's, for the places where it's more likely to happen, three forty-six and seven.
Right. Okay, so we need to entertain a motion?
I think we need to get somebody on creating an ordinance, and then the motion would come with-
Okay.
Right, I, I think that we need to draft an ordinance, in my opinion. I think we need to draft an ordinance in our next regular meeting on the twenty-second.
What can we say, I'm sorry, can we say it might be an ordinance, but is it our bylaw? Is it the ordinance? I mean, what is the appropriate, what is the-
It's the ordinance, I think.
This would be an ordinance, yeah.
Enforced by law.
And we don't have to contact DOT or anything, correct?
No.
Okay.
Oh, we can, we can put ordinances on our own town. I'm pretty sure. I'll check with Joel tomorrow about this.
A littering, a littering ordinance? Is that what it'd be?
Yeah. We, I'll, I'll-
We can see if the VLCT has something, if I'm asking if we can find a template.
See, what, what is, what is the appropriate order to put this in, and what is, and what model policies are there?
Right, and I also, I also believe personally that the fines need to be pretty rugged. I don't think it needs to be a twenty-five dollar fine when you come through uncovered.
Oh, that's true, too, and that'll be the specifics of it. Once that ordinance gets drafted, then we'll be in here talking about what the fine ought to be. And, you know, whether it's a, a, a monetary fine or an appendage.
Yeah. Firstborn. No, I think, I think it needs to be, because, because, look, and if you find somebody twenty-five bucks every time they come through, they're gonna keep coming through with their, with their load uncovered. If you find them two hundred and fifty bucks when they come through uncovered, and then it comes through again, now they're up to five hundred bucks. And I think we need to tell our sheriff's department when they're under contract, that's what they need to do. Look, we want you down there.
Right.
We want, we want this taken care of, because I, I was sitting in Stewart's one morning, and I watched a truck come out of Williamstown uncovered, uncovered, came out of Williamstown uncovered, loaded with clear garbage bags, I don't even know, they're forty gallons or whatever the size they are. And he was loaded right over the top. I left Stewart's ten minutes later, and right by Jolly's Auto, just north of Gary's, there's one of those bags in the road, and then I pass him headed south. I know where he went. He went to the transfer station, and he drove by the bag that he dumped.
And it's still sitting there.
And it's still sat there.
It's still sitting there.
He drove by it. That pissed me off.
Yeah.
Sorry.
It's true.
It is.
Every day I go by, and every day I want to stop and pick it up, but I'm afraid that I'll get run over.
So I think we just need to draft something. I think we need to come up with some pretty rugged fines, and our, I've always been against our local guys. Sorry, I'm being long-winded here, but this really gets under my skin.
But I think the local guys will appreciate it.
The local guys are telling me, we're covered anyway.
Right.
We're coming out of Bennington, when we go to Packham's and get a load, or we're, and we're drawing into Mass. We're covered anyway.
Right.
It's not gonna hurt those guys.
No.
It's not more of, it's not that much of a pain for them.
No. They're gonna respect it and take care of it.
They're mad. It's their town. They're mad.
Yep, I agree.
We're all on the same page.
Okay. Anything else on that? Anybody want to add?
Are you signing some work to people? Sounds like there's some tasks.
I'll, I'll work with whoever wants to, um, and this, whether it's Tim and Megan.
I think Ma, I think Megan would be good for this. Sorry, Megan. Because she is working with you, where this is bringing it into this with the zoning as well, and the DRB and the bylaws. I think it's really related to that, and Megan's really good at researching. I advocate for her to, to give-
And I'll, and I'll work with her specifically on this, because it's kind of my pet project right now. One of them, one of them. I get a couple, but that's one of them.
All right. Sounds good. So hopefully at our next meeting, we'll have something.
We will have one at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
We will.
All right.
Whether we approve it or not at all, but.
She's over on the garbage thing. I've got another question. I, I don't get much information, but I got information that on the trail along the river, there's a garbage barrel down there. For what? Why would anybody put out a garbage barrel? The state put them out, and what happens? You got a dumpster load there when they put a barrel out. It shouldn't be no good. You know, if you're gonna walk that trail, if you got a soda with you or a sandwich,
Take it with you.
Take it with you. Put it in your knapsack.
Right, so I, I actually would like to speak about that.
And the reason that I- And the reason that I said that was because the barrel that was put near full. And, uh, well, the lowest service guy down the sewer plant got elected to peel the bag back, and there was a, a deer carcass in there.
Oh my gosh.
No, I mean, come on, but if that barrel wasn't there, that encourages people, oh, I can dump my trash down there.
That, that's, that's.
That's true, because we have garbage cans at Stewart's and people dump their household garbage in the house.
Me too, I do that all the time.
That's true.
So.
Somebody had already picked it up before I got there.
Uh, so you went down, because I sent it to you guys, right, from Darcy, okay. So I do want to talk about that, actually, um, this is, and I had, I, you know, Darcy and I had a couple emails back and forth, I sent you guys part of it. Um, is, uh, you know, that trail was established, uh, and then, I guess. By the, by the former Recreation Task Force that was not, not Parks, it's not our committee, it was not Parks and Rec, it wasn't part of government. And Darcy had said, yes, well, there was promise that they would maintain this trail. And so she wrote to me saying, so Parks and Rec is supposed to be maintaining this, I said, no, we're not, that's not us, that's not our, you know. And so you guys need to have a conversation at some point about what you want to do with that trail. And I, like, for instance, getting rid of a trash can, who's managing that, there's no one to maintain that, and that task force doesn't exist anymore, those volunteers don't exist anymore. You know, so now it's something that's sitting there and there's no one in charge of it. And, um.
So is the garbage can still there?
I, it's.
I believe so.
As far as I know, it's still on the, on the trail down there, garbage can. That they were, well, they, they called them and asked them to clean it down the sewer department there, and they said, no. But, uh, or they called, no, they called the, the road boss. And he says, call Park and Recreation, they're involved with that.
So I think the, the point there is if it's municipal property, it's got to be municipally maintained. This speaks directly to the problem of turning over the scheduling, the cleanup, whatever it is. Res, municipal resources to private, uh, to private, uh, to private groups or private entities. Um, we, we need to be very careful with that.
Right, if a private entity doesn't exist anymore, and so now there's no one.
So I'm wondering if we should have it removed? Because there's nobody that's willing to, I think we should have the can removed.
Then what, send somebody down to remove it if we're not going to take care of it?
Right.
Right?
Who's going to, who's going to take care of it, who, who do we have?
Oh, that's right.
Nobody, nobody empties it, right?
No.
So it doesn't get emptied, it's there attracting trash, and, uh, and really we got to have a sign that says, if you bring it in, we'll take it out.
Right.
Saying, somebody, I think, unless I'm in a different spot, I walked Swobridge Park and then down, and I did the riverbank. All the way back up toward the sewer treatment plant, and it had been removed. Because the day we got the email, I come in and.
Maybe they took the whole thing, okay.
Um. It was in question at that point around lunchtime when I stopped in. And, uh, so I said, I'll stop back and I'll go down myself and see what I find. And I didn't find any remnants because you'd smell a carcass.
Okay.
Let's, let's send somebody down and remove the garbage can.
Right, make sure if there is one down there, right.
Yeah.
All right, I will call. Thank you. We need a more advanced speaker here. Um, I will call Joel tomorrow and talk to him about it. Removing the garbage can, if it's still there. Okay, anything else on that?
They want to invest in some signs saying, bring it in, you bring it out.
Okay.
It's a perfect, it's a perfect spot for one of our litter signs.
Absolutely. Okay, I will call Joel tomorrow. All right, board appointment interviews.
That's me again.
That's you again, Mike.
I'm the lucky guy tonight. So I know, I know we have a bunch of board appointments, um, DRB, Planning Commission, whatever else is out there. Um, for our next meeting, and I know we have some interested candidates that have already filed and sent us in. Um, some letters of intent. So I've been giving this some thought for a little while. And I think we need, instead of like last year, which I was new on the board. We just took whoever sent us, for the most part, a letter of intent to be on a board. And I think we're doing a talented disservice. Without interviewing the, the interested party. I'm not exactly a fond person of just filling a seat with a warm body. I think we need to have people. When they get onto a board, no matter what it is, no matter what it is, if they're applying for it, they have an interest, they should know what's going on. But I think we need to interview the people. Before we just appoint them to a board. Because if you have a seven-person board, and if you only have five people that want to serve on that board. Or if you have, if you only can come up with five qualified, what we consider to be a qualified person. I'm fine with that, I don't need the other two people if they're not going to be. A, a, a participating person who's going to bring something to that board. That's positive or, or a good idea, or, I just don't need to fill a seat, that's my opinion. And I think we need to, I think we need to, to interview, and I think, I think we need to be pretty.
Are you asking for, like, are you suggesting that, that you want people to come to the meeting for appointments or make sure they're at least here on the Zoom instead of just being appointed?
No, no. I'm, I'm saying that, that for, let's say we have three, because I think there's three on the DRB. Am I right? I'm pretty sure there's three open spots on the DRB. So I'm thinking that it, like, like when I became zoning administrator, the, the, they did a, an interview process. So I'm thinking on a Tuesday night or Wednesday night or whatever, we bring in four people who are, let's say we have four, I don't know, I'm just throwing hypothetical numbers out there, okay? We have four candidates for the DRB. Well, no, let's, let me go back, let's say we only have three candidates for the DRB. Okay, and we have three open positions. One of those candidates is totally off the wall, really. It, it, for, for Development Review Board, maybe they're better on an economic board or, or something like that. I just, I just think we're doing a disservice by filling a seat with a warm body. And I think if we bring, if we had three candidates for DRB and there's three openings for DRB. And only two of them are what the board feels are qualified for that, then we go with that. That's, that's my opinion, I just, I, I think we're just doing a huge disservice.
I think, um, in my opinion, I don't, I don't believe that we've filled any, I don't believe anybody on our boards or commissions at this point has been a warm seat. And I think we need to be, and I'm not disagreeing that we need to get qualified people. But I want to be very careful about what we define as a qualified person. We don't want to shut people out because they're not as articulate as somebody else, but their ideas can be just as sound. And so I, I don't want it to become sort of a, uh, if you, if you have somebody who can write a, write a speech for you or, or make a statement for you, and you're going to do better in the interview. You, you, we run the risk, I'm not disagreeing, but we need to, we need to be, uh, I'm not disagreeing, but we as a board need to be very cognizant of, of. Some people do not express themselves well, but they have really good ideas, and we need to make sure that our town is represented. All the diverse opinions, the ideological diversity of our town is well represented on all of our boards and commissions. We need to have boards and commissions that disagree with each other. If, if, if it's all like-minded people, then you're leaving a whole section of your town unrepresented in their government. So we need to be very careful of that.
And, and I agree with that a hundred percent, um, and I really and truly do, um. And I think, I think that's where the board, us as a board, can, because, because we don't all agree. We, right, we don't all agree all the time, Ronnie and I disagree all the time. But, but that's where we as a board can bring a person in for an interview. And say, and, and Ronnie and I totally di- disagree on interview number one. But then, you know, I'm pro interview one, Ronnie's, um, negative interview one. It's my duty to sell him, and I'm not throwing you under the bus, Ronnie, I'm just using an example because you're sitting next to me. Um, it's, it's, it's my duty to sell him on that person, and, and the reason why.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'd like to say that, you know, these jobs, first of all, they don't pay nothing. And these, some of these people, I think, uh, actually want to know, and they're not all experienced in this stuff, they're not dumb as people. A lot of them, well, they, they worked their whole life, but they figured they could do something for the town. And I think the board themselves, the DRB, you get somebody on there, you know, they got a chairman, they got a half a dozen people, six, seven people. If that person, well, doesn't show up, doesn't meet the criteria, let the board decide. I don't think the selectmen, I mean, I kind of agree with Bob there, I know, I know a lady who used to come to a lot of meetings. She couldn't express herself to, for nothing, but she had a lot of good valid points. When she got somebody to write a letter for her, it explained it pretty good, and she was sharp. But she, she would have never got put on anything. So I mean, I, I think we're, we're a little too, first of all, I mean, I don't know how many candidates we're going to have, and. I sure as heck wouldn't come in, I was on the planning board once because I was, they, they couldn't fill a seat, they needed a warm body. So I said, I'll go there, what the hell. One thing, but it wasn't because I was going to, but I also, uh, think that these people, most of these people, well, any of these things, I, I look at, they're all townspeople.
I'm not, I'm not criticizing anybody that's, I'm not criticizing anybody, Ronnie, that's already applied for, for a position, not at all. But I think, I think we all can agree that we're in a position now where we fill the seat with a warm body. And it's not really benefiting us, benefiting the town.
Well, I'm not so sure, I haven't seen anybody try to sue us on the DRB thing.
I'm not, I'm just using those as examples.
Planning, I mean, come on, and planning, all that is is a vision. That's what I kept hearing from, from the chairman and the vice chair at the time I was on, it's just a vision, it's just a vision. I thought it was more than that, I thought we were actually making a plan.
Um, can I, can I make a suggestion maybe?
Yes.
I think, thank you, I think, I think that there are probably some positions that might require interviews, such as internal auditors. Because it's a highly skilled, requires a certain thing, and maybe more the ones, you know, maybe, maybe the other ones, which are, I know a lot of people cut their teeth on planning commission. You know what I'm saying, like, that's their, like, I, people have asked, oh, where can I serve? And I always, I often say, planning commission's a great place to start because you really learn about all the different aspects of the town and vision of the town, like you said. I don't know, maybe that's a compromise that I just wanted to throw out there between you guys, that maybe there are some that you want to do interviews for, and maybe some you don't, I don't know. DRB could be specialized.
Planning board, they've had numerous times where they had somebody who is a professional planner. That comes down and explains these things, tell you why you can do this, and the board, like, well, you can only, you can only go this far into the woods or this high or what have you. And that promotes discussion, but that's why we need a quick cross-section of people, so that somebody will ask this question. Not just go with whatever, you know, they get us, well, somebody wants to sell some property or buy some property, it's advantageous to them for that.
Well, I think of it, I think, okay, so, so I'm going to, I'm going to play devil's advocate on this one. So, so I think if we're, if we're going to, if we're going to say that we want to have all voting members on all of our boards, and that's what I, I think that's what I'm hearing. Is that, that DRB or Planning Commission or whatever, then I think, because select board members can only be ex-official members, they can't vote. So they're taking up a board position and they have no voting power whatsoever. So if you need a quorum of five, and there's four board members and one select board member, they can't do anything.
That, that's a true statement.
They can't do, they can't do a single thing.
That's a true statement, the, the quorum is not a.
The quorum is not there.
Majority, it's the, it's the majority of the, of the number of voters.
Voting numbers.
Right, they do have a chance to express an opinion, and the other people are there, so if they do have a quorum of five or six people.
Well, I, but I.
You get a chance to speak if you want to, if someone wants to be in that position. I'm not arguing one way or the other.
No, I know.
The only thing I'm arguing is, you know, I think we're being pretty specific and being, I don't know.
I think we need to be specific, I think we start, I think we need to start coming up to speed with how we operate.
Working with the school board too long.
No, I haven't, no, I haven't, I was off school board for a long time, and I did, I fought them tooth and nail too, Angie will tell you that.
I'm not against, I, to be clear, I'm not against having conversations with the, uh. No, I'm not against having the conversations with the individuals that put in.
Right.
But we as the board have to be very, like, one thing I, you know, i- if you come, if, if somebody puts in for planning commission, and you've got a stack of five. And you, and, and you, we've only got three open positions, and three of them are Ivy League grads. That doesn't mean the Ivy League grad gets the position, you need to make sure that the ide- ideological diversity exists, and we as a board have an obligation to make sure that our citizens are well represented. Uh, uh, and that also doesn't mean that they, they have the best ideas, and I'm not knocking Ivy League.
I know, I know.
I'm just, I'm just making it as an example, well, because then, because now, I don't want to create a situation where we have, where the strategy to overtake a board is, is clear. And that's the strategy that some will use.
That's not the strategy I'm trying to, uh, let me give you a perfect example.
No, 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 I, 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 I said that as an unintended consequence, but the, 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 the motivation for doing it is to make sure that we have qualified people, I think we both agree with that. And I, I, so.
Well, the other thing is, last year.
Careful of how we go about it.
Right, last year, last year, we voted as a board, and I, I'm pretty sure it was on the DRB. Where we voted as a board, and a couple of board members had no clue who a couple of the people were. We had no clue who some of the, who some of the people who put a letter of intent in to be on a board last year, nobody even knew who they were. On the board, or a couple of board members, I shouldn't say nobody, but a couple of board members didn't even know who the person was. Had no idea. And I think that's, I think that's doing a disservice, I think that's doing a disservice to that person. There's, there's a couple of people here, I don't know who they are, have a great resume, I don't know, I wouldn't know them if they came to Stewart's tomorrow morning, had coffee, sat down beside me. Wouldn't have a clue who they are, I just don't think that's right, I just, I literally don't think that's the right way to be doing things.
So what about somewhere in the middle, and I think.
Well, yeah, I think that's why we're having a discussion.
And that's why, that's why I called it, uh, not against having a conversation.
Yeah.
I don't want to call it an interview, because I don't want, I, I don't want people thinking that the threshold to serve on our planning commission, our DRB, or any of other, other boards, commissions, rec committee, or anything else. Is going to be, is, is, uh, is, is, you're not going to put them through the wringer to get there, but we have to know who they are.
Yeah.
And I think that's really what you're saying.
Yeah, no, exactly.
So I think, I think if we did something like, we, we need to have a conversation, we need to know something about the individuals.
I don't care.
People want to be appointed, they have to come to the meeting.
Yeah, well, that's, that's, that would be good, that would be good too.
You know, it would be nice to have a, a little bit of an idea of where they're coming from.
You know, background.
But their background.
If they all come to the meeting where the appointments happen, then that conversation can happen.
Right, I agree with that, if anybody wants.
I don't mean in the building, I mean on Zoom, you know.
And then we can ask, like, that person a question if we have a question.
You know, I just, I don't know, I, I think if you ask them ahead of time, it gives, it gives us a chance to, to. You know, the board gives us a chance, a little bit of an idea.
You have to warn that meeting, if you wanted to do something like a meet and greet, you'd have to warn it, it has to be done in the public side, so it's still having that conversation, just so you know, it's still having that conversation in the fishbowl.
No, that's fine, that's totally fine with me, I, I just, I just think, you know, having, having just, just a little bit of, hey, why, why do you want to be on the DRB board?
Right.
Or, or planning commission or.
Simple introduction questions, and, and why do you want to do this, and what is your interest?
They all need to be asked the same question.
Well, yes, but I just think, no, for sure they have to be asked the same question, and we, we don't have to call them in an interview, we can call it whatever we want, it doesn't.
Call it the meet and greet.
And I don't want to be as intense as we were with, with our, our executive and administrative system, I don't want to be as intense as we were there, that's not my goal. You know, that's a whole different thing, I think that, you know, just. Who's Bob Jarvis, I don't know, you know, or, or, you know what I'm saying?
No, meet and greet would be awesome, because I know personally, I don't know two people on there.
That's what I'm saying, how can you vote for them? Because, because what happens is, in, in, and don't, don't tell me it doesn't happen, is, you know, I'll use you for an example, Gene. You know three people, let's say you know three people that are for the DRB, but you don't know the other two, so you're going to vote for three and L. When two of them could be way better than, whatever, I'm just saying.
So let's set up a meet and greet.
Let's set up, I, I can, I can help, me and Megan will set up a meet and greet.
Yes.
Would you like to do it the Tuesday, the twentieth?
Yes.
Okay, so Tuesday, the twentieth, I will make sure that everyone who's asked sent in a letter of intent. Is invited to that, has a Zoom link, we'll pu- we'll post it like a regular meeting. And, um, should I let them know that if they would like to be considered for appointment, that they need to come to that? Or if they're unable to, let us know, we'll, you know, maybe the chair could speak to someone or.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's fair, I think Angie could ask them if they can't come, because it's kind of, you know, people, people have lives.
Got it, done. I will send the, since it's, uh, your idea, I will send the language to you for approval. your idea, I will send the language to you for approval before I warrant it. Is that good?
Yeah, fine.
All right.
Perfect.
For everyone else?
Yeah.
Exactly.
All right, let's move on.
Is that language?
Now, we had here one person.
No, but if you'd like, I can circulate that and you guys can give suggestions and all that.
He must be a hundred years old.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're not setting a, I have a threshold. Cause that really
Do you
You and I are spoiled. We know everybody.
Can I ask that question now then? Um, Angie needs the candy. Um, let me ask this question now then. Would you like me to craft four to five questions, general questions? So that way it's just, and they'll be prepared as to what they are. And, okay, great.
I think it's gonna end, end it.
I'm gonna make them very general.
Very general.
Why do you want to be on such and such board? What do you think you can bring to that board?
Yeah, right.
And forward to, to all of them. I think you were gonna do that.
And just tell us a little something about yourself.
Okay. Great.
Cause we don't want here for hours and hours. We just want to meet them.
Got it.
See what they're all about. Okay, moving on please. Building permit changes, updating zoning permit application. Adding, um, Megan Albert to the, um, permit process. And we need to set two dates for Zoom bylaws.
Again, that's me. When, when are you guys gonna put something on here? Um, just kidding. Um, so our, our bylaw applica-, or not bylaw application, our zoning permit application, sorry, I was reading ahead of myself. Our zoning permit application. Um, and it's more, it's mostly the fee schedule on there that I find is really kind of outdated. Um, not, it's not so much our application itself, but our zoning fees. And so the, the question you asked Jim Sullivan seems like it changes bylaws more than it does.
Yeah, I can, I can explain what Jim Sullivan said once you introduce what you want to do.
So I want to update our zoning permit application because for example, right now when I send something as the zoning administrator to the DRB for a public hearing. We don't cover the cost of that public hearing. That public hearing costs the town a pound of money. We, by the time we pay
In the minutes and the agenda.
That's right. By the, by the, by the time we, by the time we pay uh, for the warning, because it has to be warned, by the time we pay the DRB, um, administrative assistant to, to do the warning and pay her for her minutes and all of that, we lose money. And I don't think we can continue to, I don't think we should continue to lose money. I think it's time to, um, and Megan and I have been working on this this week actually. Um, changing the fees and that's basically the biggest change, right? Megan, is that, that's pretty much the biggest change that we've made this week, correct?
Yes, that's right.
Um, the fee schedule. And, and I also think that, um, fee schedule needs to be more, right, because right now for a, let's, let's say a person who's putting up uh, a twenty-four by twenty-four garage right now pays fifty-eight dollars. And a person that puts on a twenty-five hundred square foot addition on their house pays fifty-eight dollars. I don't think that's a fair and equitable schedule. So Megan, and, and we didn't go crazy with it. We just kind of brought it, in my opinion, we went to a couple of different surrounding towns and kind of comparatively brought it in a little more into perspective, I guess is the best way to put it. Um, so because, because she is the DRB and planning commission administrative assistant, I, I brought her in on this with me and we worked on it together. Um, and whatever, one day this week, I don't remember. Um, put it together. So I just, I just think we need to get more up to speed on that. At least where we're covering our costs.
So I can explain.
You gave an example, you know, the garage and, and addition. Doesn't it go on, on how much the thing would cost?
Not at all. Not at all, Ronnie.
Well, what does it go on if you got fifty-eight dollars?
Flat fees.
It's a flat fee. It's a flat fee.
So are you
So my proposal, yes. My, my, my proposal is, is on, let's say on all new houses, for example, and all new houses. It's, it's on a square foot basis. So somebody building a thirty-five hundred square foot house, and I don't remember the fees off the top of my head because we're just working on this. Okay, it's per, so much per square foot with a maximum. There's a maximum on it as well. But the, the person building a thirty-five hundred square foot house doesn't pay the same as a person building an eight hundred square foot house.
That makes sense.
Okay, the, the fee schedule is, the fee schedule is driven accordingly to, uh, square footage. And, and I didn't go, we, we adjusted, like I said, we, we went, Shasbury is one of the towns that we use. We went to their, um, zoning permit application and we adjusted because I don't think that we're exactly a comparative town totally as, as Shasbury, you know, with our population. So, um, the means of the population. So, so I did, I did adjust it. What I felt was, was a little more fair. Um, and that's, that's pretty much the only change. Our subdivisions all stayed the same. Um, all the requirements stayed the same, the timing all stayed the same. Um, still need wastewater permit and, and the, and the, all of that stuff still is in there because they have to have that for the state anyway. Um, so, so the biggest change that we came up with really was fee schedules to try to get them more in line. To be fair, Ronnie, exactly, to be fair. A person that puts up a, a person can put up a fifty by one hundred bu- barn right now and pay fifty-eight dollars and a person can put up a two hundred square foot shed because a hundred and forty-four square feet is the minimum. As it stands, it's gonna change a little bit with the new bylaws, but that person pays fifty-eight dollars. So, so I, I'm just trying to be a little more
This is another, another question you popped into my shell brand new yak.
I get long winded.
You had, uh, a maximum.
Hmm.
See, I, I don't believe in maximum. They had a maximum like before, you had so many acres of land, up to so much, you know, it cost you this much. But if you own another hundred and fifty, well, it costs less per acre. The, the land is still worth the money.
No, I agree.
Same thing when I quit a house. If you want to build a house and, and it's got eight thousand square feet and somebody builds one that's got thirty-five hundred, there shouldn't be a cutoff at say five thousand. You should pay on the whole thing. You know what? I, I, I want to do like the, like the state, the school. They want to look at your income tax. You can pay it. That's how they're gonna do this.
Just like you're getting a car. Yeah, just like you're getting a car.
That's right.
Yeah.
You read the paper. That's what they want to do.
Megan, do you remember when, when we did the maximum? Wasn't there a thing after so many square feet, it did go up another fifty dollars or something like that?
Yes, I believe that's what it says.
I think there was a maximum, then it did go up a little bit, Ronnie, after so that like you said, if somebody's building an eight thousand square foot house, they still would pay, end up paying more. So I guess there really probably is no maximum, but I did kind of, for our general intent.
I'm just curious because everything else, it seems like, you know, the more money you got.
Yeah.
But they stop charging you after you get up to a certain amount. They figure this guy's got a million dollars. You can't afford all that.
Well, I, I'm fine with that.
Well, the other side of it is that, what we, what we ought to be trying to do here is to cover our costs, not, not turn a profit, right?
Right.
And, and, and that's all, that's what we need to be doing.
Right.
The other thing is you don't want to disincentize people from building because that's also our tax base.
Well, and that's, that's why Bob, honestly, that's why I didn't go the same fee schedule that the other towns were using. I, I did cut it quite a bit from what some of the other towns are using around us. Um, you know, I, I think it's a fair, I think if, if I remember right and it's still a work in progress, so that's why we don't have anything right now. Um, I think like an average fifteen hundred square foot house right now costs by the time they do all of their permitting and their sewer and whatever else, was like a hundred and, I think it's like a hundred and forty bucks.
That's to the person doing the building.
That's
Those are the fees for the person who's looking for the permit.
That's right. That's the permit fee is right, somewhere around there, the time they do everything. And I think we might've gone to like two hundred dollars or, or a hundred and seventy-five or something for that particular house.
Do we know what it costs the town? What, what does it cost us to process this all the way through? And does it really cost us more for an eight thousand square foot house than it does for a hundred and fifty, uh, for, you know?
It takes more time to process the, the permit. Um, but it, it really doesn't cost a lot more to per permit probably. Where we're definitely losing is definitely losing on our, on our legal. Any, anywhere we have to, to, to process a permit legally, through the DRB or whatever, we are losing our shirt every time.
It's a hundred and seventy bucks to put it in the paper.
And we only charge a hundred and fifty-eight dollars for the permit.
Right, so that, uh, and that's kind of my question is what does it, what does it cost the town to do? So, uh, what does it cost the town to, to process one of these?
Probably easily two fifty, is my guess.
So that's what the permit should be, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, but I, but it doesn't, every permit doesn't cost two hundred and fifty dollars to process.
Right. Only when it goes to the DRB where it has to be legally worn.
Right.
If you, if it's just a you sign off, then it's just
Right.
It's your time. Right.
Right.
What causes it? I, why, I, I think this
Ones that require site plans are far more expensive than ones that are just a sign off by him.
Because when it has to go to the DRB, there's a whole process. It has to be warned, it can't be warned. It has to be warned fifteen days from the, from the time of the public hearing. There has to be a public hearing held. There could be more than one public hearing held. If it's a major subdivision, then there's multiple public hearings potentially.
And more warnings.
And more warnings and more
Which is a little different than building a house.
Plus, plus you're posted, but you gotta know it by all the neighbors. I mean, it's
Well, I, you know, I really wasn't looking for the itemized, you know, but, but what does the total thing cost? And, and, and I guess there is no answer to that because if, if it has to be warranted, it's a
I went with
Different situations. But there has to be buckets, right? There has to be, here, here's a flow chart.
Yes, require a site plan.
Does it require a site plan? Yes.
Yes.
Require a site plan? No. And what are the good criteria? And then, and those should be different fees.
There's, there's different fees, the, the, a sub, uh, we didn't change a DRB hearing um, totally. We, we went from a hundred and fifty-eight dollars, I think, to two hundred and fifty dollars, which is gonna cover our cost for that DRB hearing, barely. But it does cover, it, it covers our cost. Um, and then, and then there are different fees if it requires some different, more things that there, that we did increase. There's, there's some addendums in there, you know? Every time we have to do a, uh, an adjustment, it's fifty bucks or something like that. I, I can't remember exactly because there was a lot of numbers that we were working with.
So do you need the board's approval for this?
I'll bring it to the next meeting.
I was gonna say, bring it to the next meeting with everything.
Right, and I, I don't, Rebecca's gonna talk about, she reached out to Jim Sullivan today. Because the planning commission, if it's, if it, I, and I believe it's only if the bylaws
I'll explain it.
Right. But if we just change the fee schedule on this and change our permit process a little bit, I don't think it has to go to the planning commission. We're the ultimate, we're the end of the, we're the end of the road anyway, the select board.
So I can explain to you what Jim Sullivan told me. Um, you, the select board has the sole authority to change fee structure. So that, if he comes to you with a new fee schedule, that's your, you have the authority to approve that. What you cannot change in the permitting process is like, you can't change a bylaw. You can't change what requires a site plan and what doesn't require a site plan, things like that. But you absolutely can make changes in the processes that have to do with administration. So you can establish a process that says all of our permits go to Megan, then Megan creates a calendar and then this is the new fee schedule and you can even change your form. Like those are all administrative things. You have the authority to change the administrative portions of it, but not any requirements.
And that, and I'm not And I'm not asking to change any requirements.
Right.
I'm just asking to change the fees. Right, I'm just asking to change fee schedules and a little bit of the process because I do want Megan involved in the, in the permitting process a little bit more.
It'll streamline it.
It'll, exactly. It'll streamline it. It'll, it'll streamline our permitting process. A, a permit, a permit's gonna come here. She's here more than I am. A permit's gonna come here, it's gonna come to Megan. She can email me right away or text me or whatever we have to. Hey, we got a permit right here. This is, it's here. It's permit number, she can, she can go with the sequential numbers because it came in today. It's permit number twenty-one dash zero zero one zero, whatever, whatever it is. And then that starts
It's put in our database.
And that starts the process that much better. So that's another thing. That's why Megan is in here. I do want to add her to that process and I don't know if it needs board approval or not. I would assume it does because she's not
I would assume that, uh, we need board approval once you have the proposal and you have the structure, then we come in.
Right, next week. You have a lot of homework to do.
I'm fine. I'm fine with this. This is already, this is already done. You know, ninety percent of this is done with Megan and I. We, we worked on it pretty diligently a couple of mornings ago.
Okay.
Um, we're, we're in pretty good shape with this process. I just wanted to bring it here tonight.
And just so you know, just so you know as well that that job, what they just did is originally Sidney and I were going to, and Mike and I were gonna work on that when I was doing that position. And so this is something that's been talked about for a while, but the permit process is very clunky. So it's, you know, it was an agenda that's moved on from the last
Okay.
I'm not trying to change everything because I know you've already done a lot of work on it. I'm just trying to understand
Sure.
Uh, that the fee structure then is based on increasing fees. So I, because it seems to me that, um, that how much it costs the town has everything to do with, does it require a site plan? Does it not require a site plan? And there's other decision criteria, I'm sure they're in there.
Well, and the, and the other thing, the other thing, Bob, is that absolutely, absolutely increasing our fees now because, because in order to streamline this process, because, because if somebody, the way it was working pre-COVID is I worked in here on Wednesday nights, one night a week with the permit process. Okay? And now I ha, I, because of COVID, I have them emailed to me. So adding Megan into this permit process is gonna streamline, but it also adds a cost because we have to pay for Megan's time. Okay?
She's processing her permits anyway.
Right, but, right. You know, so, so I want to cover that cost there too. So, so by ha, but, but if some, like there's, there's a couple of permits here that I saw that weren't here at, uh, yesterday when I was in here, they weren't here yesterday. They got dropped off sometime between yesterday and today. Now with Megan being in here more than I come in and out, she can, she can start that process the second they come in or the, or the next morning or whatever it is and start that permit process rather than sit here for five days. And then we fall behind and then people are wondering where their permits are because it's just, it's virtually, you know, I mean, it's not a full-time position for me to, to come in and file a process.
Right, right. And, but that's more of a work, that's more of a workflow than it is a, a, a fee structure, right?
Yeah, but I mean, we got
Administrative changes. That's what Jim Sullivan was talking about. Like changing the process of how you receive the permits. Who's taking charge of them? Who's making sure they're filed? The calendar of setting up the, you know, I don't know. That's, that's what we had always talked about prior to Megan coming on board.
Okay.
All right, it's a little bit, I mean, it is out of my wheelhouse, but, uh, uh, but
When you see the fee schedule, I think you'll be happy with it, Bob. I don't, I don't, because I'm not, I'm not saying it's gonna cost ten thousand dollars for a building permit for a thirty-five hundred square foot house. I think it might be two hundred bucks or something like that. I mean, you know, it's not, it's not crazy.
No, I was just, I, where I was leaning was, uh, the costs aren't necessarily driven by the, by the cost of the building or the structure or the square footage. It's driven more by decisions like, uh, does it need, does it require a site plan? Does it require this?
Or a site visit.
Yeah.
Which, which I've done a number of site visits. I don't charge mileage. I could. I just don't. I, I just do it. It's, after, I just go do it.
Okay.
It has to be based on something. So if you're not doing it on square footage or whatever. It seems to me that if you, like if it goes to DRB, if you've got to put it in the newspaper, if you've got to have a lawyer look at it, or if you gotta do this, you, you ought to know about what that costs.
That, and that's the point I was making.
That's the thing that I'm looking at. Now, if that costs you, you know, a hundred and fifty dollars, well, you can't give them a permit for fifty-eight dollars.
Right.
You gotta bump it up to a couple of hundred bucks to cover, you know.
That's what I'm trying to do.
Postage and other stuff around there too.
That, and that's what I'm trying to do. I'm just trying to cover, I'm trying to cover the cost. I'm not trying to make any money. I'm trying to deter anybody from building. I, I mean, I want new houses and down and, and stuff. Uh, you know, so I'm not trying to deter anybody whatsoever.
The only reason I say that is because I'm familiar with tax sales and stuff. And that's how they work. If you bid on the property, that's, that's what the cost of the property is. But then you're gonna pay for the advertising fee, you're gonna pay for the lawyer to handle it.
It's the actual cost.
But you're gonna get, these are all added into that cost.
On top of what you bid.
Well, you've got to pay that one.
Right, right.
Yeah, yeah. You gotta get the lawyer a check for that.
Right.
Be like the DRB, you gotta give them a check for it.
Okay.
And you have some idea, and, and, I mean, like, I think it should be close. I don't want to fleece the people. I want people
I don't either. I'm not trying to do that at all. I'm just, I'm trying to be fair and equitable.
But we gotta have some kind of schedule that, you know, you can understand. How come it costs me three hundred and only costs that guy fifty-eight dollars? There's a difference. You had to go to the DRB, the other guy, all you had to do was come to the zoning ministry.
I think when you see the fee schedule, you'll, you'll all.
Okay.
Agree with it, and, and, you know, I think you'll be fine with it, and I just, I just.
Or not, it'll be easier to talk about, you'll have it in front of you.
Right, you'll have it in front of you, we just, we just didn't get time to.
Okay.
To draw up the schedule, and you know, she's working on it, and she's got it pretty much, we added a couple things today. So, but she's got it pretty much where we want it to be.
Okay, moving on to gravel crushing, please.
Oh man, is that me again?
No, it's his.
Nah, that can be anybody. I'd have been, got the, took the lowest bid.
Mine though, uh-oh.
I got it. I'll do it again.
On the bottom.
So we got the lowest, took the lowest bid on.
Yeah, but.
On the start with, and then, well, he asked me, so I'll let you people in on that. He asked me, he said, what do you think? I said, I can't see any problem with that, and, and, oh, yeah, another thousand yards, that's what he wants. We got the money in the budget for it, and gravel don't go away, people ain't stealing it, it don't go away.
Right, it would probably be saving money eventually.
We're gonna get it done for so much uh, yard to crush it. And we, we were gonna get uh, five thousand.
Right.
Now he'd like to bump it up another thousand, to six thousand, that's, we need to gravel, if we don't need it, even if we don't need it this year, we'll need it the following year.
Right.
And it'll all be on site, so that's, that's all there is, and the price is good.
So. He's already talked about changing it to ten thousand yards every two years, because of the, the uh. Moving fee of all the uh, equipment and stuff.
Right, it's gonna save on equipment, moving fee, yep, so I.
I'm okay with it.
All right, so can I have a motion for him to?
Make a motion, and we, we assign a contract for that extra thousand yards to gravel, make it six thousand.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Bob?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Moving on to road bridge update. Do you have people on here?
Here it is, right here, you can read it.
Thank you.
Very short.
Give her the mic.
As you know, we commenced work on the Main Street Bridge, it's coming along pretty well, although we ran into more bad spots than anticipated. Some of the bottom concrete is pretty soft from water and salt getting underneath. We came across other spots that also should be addressed also. We had eight point two square yards, more than originally thought, we bid it out for sixty-five square yards. And we would like to do seventy-three point two square yards. The additional eight point two square yards will cost six thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars. If agreed, we will do a change order for the extra, thank you for your consideration, Joel. Can I entertain a motion to add the additional eight point two for the cost of six thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars for the Main Street Bridge?
Don't move.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Bob?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Angie? Aye, oh.
Aye.
Thank you, sorry, I'm starting to get tired, sorry. All right, that entertains everything except for public comment.
One of their hands raised, Megan?
Any hands raised, Megan, please raise your hand if you have any public comment.
Is someone on a fire tablet?
Okay, um, the fire tablet, they can unmute themselves then and say their name.
Hello?
Hello?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, please identify yourself.
Hi, it's John Bashy.
Hi, John.
How you guys doing tonight?
Good, thank you.
Um, I just wanted to make uh, just two quick comments, um, something uh, I, I think, thinking about after, after the discussion I just heard. Um, one is on the permit process, um, I think on that, I, I think what I heard is, sounds good and everything. Um, I just think uh, probably should have some kind of like chain of custody. Uh, so when the permit process starts, um, that, it starts with, with Megan. Then it would go to zoning, and if it has to go to health, uh, health officer, or DRB, or wherever. By time it ends, there's a chain of custody showing where it was, how long it was at each person, just so we can, I'll get a better idea of the process and where it's going to. Um, that was one, uh, one thing I thought of, um, something for you guys to think about. And then the other thing was on the interview stuff process, uh, I do agree with that interview process. Um, the only downfall to that is, I've been on both sides of that, and um. I sat at all the meetings during, uh, trying to get on different boards. Um, showing my interest, trying to be on there and stuff like that, and it took many, many times. And the people that were, were getting voted in, um, were not even showing up to meetings. Um, never even had a, a process, never were there, period. Um, but still got voted in over top of somebody who was showing interest. Um, so I think, as a board, I think you should look at, um, just opinion on it anyway, should look at that. Um, closely to see if that person is there to try to help the town. Or, or are they just uh, you know, throwing their name in there and gonna sit home and, and see what happens? Um, you know, that, that is, that's happened to me quite a few times, trying to get on the planning commission. Um, and uh, you know, and other, other positions there in town. Um, so that's just uh, you know, a view that I had, and just wanted to share that, I thank you, and you guys have a great night.
Thank you very much, we'll take that under consideration, thank you. Is there anybody else out there, Megan?
Steve?
It's probably Donna.
Go ahead, Donna.
Hi, it's Donna Lozan, um, real quick, I just wanted to say thank you uh, to the people of Pownell. For all of their donations to the Pownell American Legion for our recent Easter egg hunt. I'm not sure if the board is aware, but we ended up with over three thousand Easter eggs filled with candy for the children of the town of Pownell. And so we just wanted to say thank you for that, thanks, everybody.
You're welcome, Donna, I'm glad you had a great turnout. Thank you. Is there anybody else? Jamie, do you have a comment?
Just more of an informational thing, um. The uh, Benton radio station pitched out, and I guess other towns are doing time or something, so they're gonna, I, go, go ahead and put. Uh, something together, what their thought process is on it, and whatever money that they're looking forward to take and do something. Um, to bring it forward to the board.
What do you mean, like a, like a, like fifteen minutes to talk about the news in Pownell, or?
I, not clear about the whole thing, I, it's just they.
I'll do it.
They asked me, you know, if something, we might be interested, I said, put, put a proposal together, that way we could, they can look at it as a board. Um, so that's what I, and I told my, bring it up during our comments.
All right. Is there anybody else out there?
Sorry. You didn't wanna talk about that, Rebecca, did you volunteer?
I'll do it. Oh, you had to pay for it, oh, oh, okay, I thought they were offering it to us, I was like, I'll talk. Give me the, give me the time, I'll do it.
All right, since there's nobody else out there asking any questions, can I have um, a motion to go into executive session, please?
Make a motion to move to executive session.
And will you be taking action?
So.
Second. And to be clear, it's executive session for personnel?
Yes, personnel.
I don't think any action will be taken tonight.
No, not tonight, I don't think so.
Okay. All right, so does that mean Cat TV can leave?
Sure.
Okay, so that means that actually, the whole board is present, uh, so I'm gonna. I'm, well, actually, Megan, can you put everyone into the waiting room? It doesn't matter that we still have to illegally allow the public to come back in, in case, to hear our adjournment, in case they want to, so. Megan, put everybody into the waiting room, um, and Cat TV, we're all set. And I'm gonna turn off our video and our.